Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the Oceanside Planning Commission meeting for, what is today, October 9th, sorry. I was looking at the minutes from last meeting. It is October 9th. This is the Oceanside Planning Committee Commission meeting. If I could get everybody to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. Okay. City Planner, if you would please call roll.
Certainly. Chairman Rosales.
Present.
Vice Chair Morrissey.
Present.
Commissioner Balma.
Present.
Commissioner Anthony.
Present.
Commissioner Dodds.
Present.
And Commissioner Malik.
Present.
Let the record show that the full membership of the Planning Commission is present, and we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Going to the next item on the agenda, communications are matters not on the agenda for tonight. Do we have any slips to speak?
Chair Rosales, we do not have any slips for that.
Great, thank you. We don't have any slips, but if you'd like to address the commission on, again, an item not on tonight's agenda, you're more than welcome to come forward. Okay, seeing nobody come forward, we will go to approval of minutes from our last meeting, and that was September 25th. I made that reference earlier, so I'm looking for a motion or any discussion by the commissioners for the minutes from our last meeting.
I make a motion that we adapt the minutes.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Malik, second.
Second.
And a second, Commissioner Dodds. Let's go ahead and vote.
Let the record show that the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consent calendar. We do not have anything listed this evening, followed by transportation items. We also do not have anything listed under that on the agenda, so we'll go to our public hearings. We have one item this evening. It is item number four, consideration of tentative map and development plan and density bonus at a project called Loma Alta Terraces. We did see this item before, I believe it was in August, and so this is what I call a return item for our consideration this evening. That being said, we'll do disclosures again. Read the staff report. Thank you for putting that together, Dane. We got a number of emails from the community, and I did not do a drive-by this time. I did a drive-by last time. And again, we heard this item last time, I believe, in August. Vice Chair Morrissey.
Everything that you said, other than I did not see or read the emails.
And we do have several in front of us that Dane printed out for us. If you want to run through this as he does his presentation. Commissioner Dodds?
Read the staff report, read emails, but I did not drive by the area this time. I was there earlier, the last meeting.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Dodds, or, excuse me, Commissioner Balma?
Staff report and emails.
Thank you. Commissioner Anthony?
Staff report, emails, and I did do a drive-by this time.
Thank you. And Commissioner Malik?
I read the staff report, emails, and visited the site.
Thank you. Dane, good evening to you.
Good evening, Chair. Commissioners, Dane Thompson here, presenting tonight's item, Loma Alta Terraces, revisited. This item is a continuation of the August 28th meeting, where this commission considered the project and voted unanimously to continue it to this meeting in order for the applicant to conduct further outreach and possibly revise the material. Since the August 28th meeting, the applicant has held another outreach meeting. The materials have been revised for consistency. The color palette has been updated, and a condition has been included for privacy. To refresh your memories, here's the project site. It's a two-acre lot that spans from Crouch Street to Loma Alta Drive, and as you can see there, it is currently unbelted. The project is a request for three entitlements, a tentative tract map, and a development plan with density bonus. The tentative tract map is a request to subdivide the two-acre lot into 13 lots, ranging from 2,800 square feet to 13,000 square feet. The development plan is a request to construct 13 single-family homes from two housing products. 11 of those units would be three-story, 3,200-square-foot homes. Two of the units would be two-story, 1,600-square-foot homes. Associated improvements include a private cul-de-sac, widened public streets, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, landscaping, and a biofiltration. This project is proposing to reserve one of the units to very low-income households, which awards the applicant additional density, among other benefits. The tract map has not changed, as you see here, 13 lots with an average lot size of 5,500 square feet, all taking access from Loma Alta Drive. The development plan also hasn't changed, 13 units, 11 of which have a three-car garage in a tandem configuration. The other two have a two-car garage. The elevations for the units have been updated for consistency with a new color palette of mostly white, gray, and black accents. Housing product A, as shown here, would comprise 11 of the units. When I say that the elevations have been updated for consistency, they are now consistent with the floor plans. Housing product B is similar, also updated for consistency and revised with the new color palette. Those are for the other two units. The proposed landscaping has not changed, with landscaping focused on the site's corners and along the cul-de-sac. Associated improvements also have not changed, which include the widening of Loma Alta Drive and Crouch Street up to nine feet, the installation of curb, gutter, and sidewalk on both frontages, with street parking being possible along the project frontage on both sides due to the increased width. The sewer line is also proposed to be upsized from a six-inch line to an eight-inch line for about 450 feet down Loma Alta Drive. The density bonus calculation has not changed. We have a total of 13 units, which started from a base density of nine units, with one reserved for very low-income households, which awards them an extra four units. Per state law, density bonus projects can request unlimited waivers or reductions in development standards if they would physically prelude the project. Applicants are also awarded a specific number of concessions, which can waive a requirement that adds a cost to the project. The city must allow these waivers and concessions unless they would have a specific quantifiable adverse impact based on objective written health or safety standards. The applicant is proposing to use one concession to waive the city's utility undergrounding requirement, which would have otherwise undergrounded one utility pole on Crouch Street front. Since the August 28th meeting, additional yellow signs have been posted at the project site. So far, letters of opposition have been received from 11 individuals or families. The first outreach meeting was held via Zoom at 8:00 AM in March, where around 10 people attended. After direction from this body, the applicant held an additional outreach meeting in mid-September at 6:00 PM at the project site, to which around 40 people attended. Common concerns from the public include being too dense, poor aesthetics, parking issues, increased traffic, increased runoff, inadequate infrastructure, and increased noise. This commission expressed concerns with the outreach conducted by the applicant, that floor plans did not match up with the elevations, the privacy of the neighbors was not being respected, that there was no cohesive architectural theme, that the scale of the project was incompatible with the community, and that only one point of ingress egress was provided. The proposed project is found consistent with land use and housing policies of the general plan with regard to affordable housing, as well as the applicable provisions of zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance beyond the requested waivers and concession. Since the August meeting, the applicant has conducted further outreach by hosting an additional meeting at the project site. The color palette has been improved based on community feedback from a combination of blue and grays to now mostly white, gray, and black. The elevations now match up with the floor plans, and the trash receptacles are now posed in a proper location. The applicant also subjected themselves to a condition of approval that all rear windows be frosted if located within 20 feet and 5 inches from the rear property line. That condition would apply to lots 5, 6, 10, 11. No other changes have been proposed, including changes to the size, scale, or density of the project. Staff has determined that the project would be eligible for a Class 32 infill exemption as justified by the memo attached to the staff report. The project would not have significant effects pertaining to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality, and permanent impacts to habitat would be less than significant. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission confirm issuance of a Class 32 infill exemption and approve the project as proposed with findings and conditions there. That concludes my presentation. The applicant also has a short presentation as well, and will both be available for questions.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Dane. Thanks for that summary. That was a good rundown of what we discussed at our meeting in August. I'm going to hold my comments for the moment. Any commissioner comments at this point? Any questions for Dane? Looks like we don't, but we may call you back, Dane. Thank you. And the applicant, you said, had a short presentation? Yes, sir. Come forward. If you'd give us your name for the record, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioners, Scott Darnell, representative for the applicant, Loma Alta Terraces LLC. Okay. I'm going to touch a little bit on the community outreach meeting that we were requested to perform after our last Planning Commission meeting, and then I'll wrap up with some short comments and be very respectful for you guys' time tonight. Our outreach meeting took place on 9/18 at the project site, held by myself. We sent out a mailer to every residence within 1,500 feet and all occupants within 100 feet, and a total of 780 mailers were sent out via U.S. Postal Service, and they all went out around 9/23. On the participation side, we had myself, our architect present at the meeting, our civil engineer present at the meeting, and there was representative of the city, Dane, was present at the meeting. We included a clipboard with sign-in sheets, so we registered 37 community members who participated, and possibly there were more that didn't sign in, but those are the residents that signed in and spoke to it. We had a fairly detailed amount of information present for each person to ask and peruse as needed. Shown on this, on the board is the site plan, the floor plans, conceptual elevations. We brought some architectural themes with different color schemes to have the resident, the local residents opine as to their thoughts. We brought color printouts of the landscape plants that we are going to be installing on the project site, a detailed landscape plan, color tree plan, the palette which I mentioned, and then copies of the tentative map documents, as well as a color aerial. I will, in terms of the next slide, the directional comments we received, we had colored stickies that we handed out to the residents, and if they so elected, they could tell us which color scheme they liked. And so I think there were about 29 votes or 29 directional commentaries, and we, the most popular one, which received nine stickies on it, was the black, gray, white theme, which we then rectified our plans and followed the theme in terms of which the residents, the local residents that showed up at the meeting, liked the most. We also included a color landscape palette to show some of the trees that were on the city's landscape list that we plan, we'd like to install around the project, kind of give it a look and feel for people to see. There was some comments and questions that were either mentioned at this meeting, or have previous comments, or questions, comments that were raised at the community meeting, and we had some prepared notes to address them. I'd like to address those now, so that I can hopefully clear some of the questions in people's minds if they were asked and answered. Previously, some community members had requested a traffic comment about the private drive entering Loma Alta. We elected to add a stop sign on that request, so that stop sign was previously added in the original community meeting. The second thing that's listed here is there was a commentary about privacy. Four of the lots are shorter than the setback code of 20 feet, and so we elected to even do more than that. Anything within 20 and 1/2 feet, we would frost the windows so that there was not a privacy issue from a neighbor to the subject property. But, you know, one thing to keep in mind is that, you know, four of the lots of 13 come within this number, and the average is about 24 feet of setback, but a lot of the structures that are behind are much farther from the property line. That's only, we're only counting to the common property line. One of the comments about cut-through access from Crouch to Loma Alta. Again, we've been dealing, working with the city's staff engineers for two years on this project, you know, plus now, and it was originally brought up on the Zoom call about, you know, some residents didn't want the traffic, some of them wanted it, that, you know, were on one side of the street versus the other. We specifically discussed this with the city engineering department. It's also referenced in the staff report that it does not, it's not a current city standard to have that circulation cut through a private drive. So we elected to move forward with the cul-de-sac design, and that's where we left it here today. There was a comment from this, from a concerned resident about the sewer capacity concerns, of which we commented, we measured that we were going to be upsizing the six-inch main to an eight-inch main at our own cost. Again, the architectural theme, we covered a little bit, that we wanted to ask the residents and the community what they liked, and so handed out as many stickies as I could, and we believe that far and away, we improved the project with the selection of, their selection of the black, gray, white theme that we presented. So in all, I'll make this super short for you guys, but we'd like to have you guys approve this project, because we think it's a benefit for the residents, for the city. I mean, in the city of Oceanside, there's 173,000 residents in a county of 3.3 million people, and housing is a human right, and this project allows specifically a family that's at a very low affordable earning wage to be able to afford a nice new house that they would absolutely not be able to afford otherwise, and allow, you know, other families to, you know, grow and live in the community here. So, yeah, and I hope that you would approve the project, and please ask many questions you like.
Thank you, Ms. Darnell. First of all, I think there's one question from Vice Chair Morrissey, but first of all, I'd like to, there's actually a couple of questions, but Mr. Darnell, if you would stay at the dais, that'd be great. I'd like to start by just thanking you for holding the extra community outreach. It sounds like it was a worthwhile effort. Sounds like you gained some input from the community that then translated into some changes to the project, maybe not everything that we had asked for, or the community had asked for, but again, we can maybe talk about some of that, but thank you for doing that. Appreciate it, Dan. I'm going to go to commissioners, starting with Commissioner Balma.
Thank you. My voice has almost gone at a really big party on Saturday. I talked a lot. Yeah. So I was just, can you go back to your slide on the ones that the neighbors picked their favorite, this one, that one's a beautiful, okay, thank you. I would have to agree that your black and gray and white one does look great, but there's one thing you don't have on these, is like a little bit of that wood look. I mean, that, you know, and plus, the elevation itself is totally different, but the idea was, I kind of would agree with the neighborhood as far as that goes, but this doesn't look like any of these. So is there any way you can kind of spruce, maybe adding a little bit of that, see how you have on a lot of these elevations, there's a little bit of a wood feel to it? The black, brown, gray wood kind of look color? Just give it a little bit more something, because, you know, this is, this is a pretty stark elevation for the neighborhood that you're putting this in, so if there's anything you can do, just little stuff, a little paint doesn't hurt. It doesn't even cost anything.
Absolutely.
Just something to make it look like what they picked.
Yes. We're absolutely willing to.
I just wanted to say that.
Thanks. Thanks, Louise. Vice Chair Morrissey, go ahead.
Yeah, so everybody knows that we need housing, more of it, in California, and affordable. And, you know, we're only going to get that if we build more houses, so, and I agree with what Tom said, appreciate what you've done and come back. The question is, since you brought it up, these are affordable, can you let us know? I'm just curious, affordable, are these going to be, is the range 1.2 to 1.4, and if you would care to address that?
For an affordable unit, $1.4 million?
Well, I'm just wondering, what do you think the for-sale prices are going to be? When you say affordable, what's affordable these days for development?
Yeah, I think that we would look at the for-rent. You know, it would be the for-rent affordable published rates that exist within...
So these are going, are these for sale or rentals?
They could be for sale or for rent, and so we haven't, I don't think we've elected to go either way with this. We don't have an approved project.
So let me ask you again, are these for-sale properties or for-rent houses?
You're asking specifically about the affordable unit, correct?
Okay. But the other houses are for sale?
That's our understanding, yes.
Okay.
For rent is only on the affordable.
It is a public hearing. You'll have your opportunity to get in front of the commission here in a moment. I'm going to go back to one item that was discussed about at the last meeting and again here, and that is the access through from Loma Alta to Crouch.
Yes.
And you must have looked at it, and I know we expressed an interest and stood the community to see if we could do that. Looks like it was considered. Could we maybe change that a little bit? Because I'm thinking, we all bike and walk a lot, too. This looks like a very walkable community. Would that be a possibility to make a pedestrian and bike access from one, from Loma Alta to Crouch, and vice versa? Or, again, are we squeezing the parcels there, and that's not a possibility? I'm thinking in between a couple of parcels?
Yeah, I don't think it works. We have the cul-de-sac environment that loops back out right away, and so I think that opens up a can of worms, difficulty with, you know, access, safety, all these type of things in terms of passing through people's private property.
Okay. Don't see any other, oh, yes, I do. Apologize. Commissioner Dodds, you had a question?
Yes, I wanted to come back to the question that was posed to you concerning a for-sale versus for-rent. So for clarity, the very low-income house is that one for rent?
I can't say what happens 100 years in the future. I don't know how to guarantee that.
I'm not talking about 100 years. We're just talking about present. So when we build, when you build, is the intent for the very low-income for rent or for sale?
We anticipate it to be for rent.
Okay. And for the remaining 12 units, are those are considered for sale, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to make sure that was, I just wanted to clear that, because the answer you gave was very ambiguous, so...
I was confused by the question. I apologize.
Commissioner Dodds, if I may add some clarity to this topic, so as part of the density bonus, there's one, there's a requirement for one of the units to be reserved. That income category for which they're being reserved is the very low-income category, which means that a potential tenant of that unit is, makes 50% or less of area median income. What staff has found with these projects that reserve one unit for very low income, what typically happens is that there isn't a qualified person that he can purchase to afford to carry a mortgage on that. They don't qualify. They don't, the underwriting doesn't pass the banks and the lenders. So what's been happening recently is that the developer will hold that unit and rent it to a qualifying family for at least a period of 55 years, for which it's income restricted. After that, it'll become a, it could become a market-rate unit.
Thank you for that explanation. It's, I know it's always implied or understood. I just wanted to make sure that everyone here understood exactly what that was. One last question. And I know there's not a through street, but is there a walk path that takes you out, or do, is everybody exiting from Loma Alta Drive?
Yes, per the cul-de-sac.
Whether it's pedestrian or driving?
Yes, pedestrian and drive in a cul-de-sac.
Is there not a way to at least create a walk path from the side, so there's a quicker access to Crouch Street?
At this point, we do not want to have a thorough fair. It just opened up, we did some analysis, and it opened up a can of worms for us and the residents there, and safety is better.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Dodds, on the clarity of rent versus sale. That was, I think, helpful to everybody. Commissioner Malik?
Yeah, actually, I have some questions for Dane. Couple of things. It was mentioned in a couple of the comments here, a couple of, there were two developments going in the neighborhood. What's the proximity to the, from this development to the other, and what's the unit density on that?
Commissioner Malik, I only know of one other project. I think if there's another one included, it might be a fair ways away. The one I know of is the Loma Alta 10 project. It's a 10-unit development on 2 and 1/2 acres. It's, I would say, about 500 feet north of the project site on Loma Alta Drive.
On the other side of the street?
Yes.
Yeah, I know that lot. Okay. Okay, so then we have basically 23 housing units that are going to go into that street within a 500-yard meter distance from each other? Okay. Was any, doesn't appear, I'm not sure if you could clarify, was there a traffic study done for the total impact of both of those?
Commissioner Malik, for the Loma Alta Terrace, the Loma Alta 10 project has an effective density of 2.4 units per acre. It's about 1,000 feet away from this project site. There was an initial study, mitigated negative declaration prepared for that project. As part of that project, there was a traffic study done, but that's a number of years ago now. Since that time, the city's adopted level-of-service guidelines, which dictate when a traffic study is required. Neither of these projects, either individually or cumulatively, trigger that threshold, so no, to answer your question, a traffic study has not been, a comprehensive traffic study has not been done for the Loma Alta Terraces project that includes the Loma Alta 10 project.
Okay, thank you. And then with the letters of support, I could only see one signature and identify a name, but there's no, nothing that discerns where these folks who are in support live, so if you could clarify that, since we got those from you.
I'll defer that one to the applicant.
Saying now?
Excuse me?
Are you asking me that question now?
Yes, we just received, apparently, eight letters of support.
A supporter was on their way here, and they received, and they got a flat tire on the highway, so she mentioned that she had some letters of support from her and her neighbors and other supporters, and so that's regrettably the format in which I received them, but I can follow up if needed, get, you know, full...
I think it's relative, since we've got a couple of sides of this perspective with the current residents. There's nothing telling me that these people even live in the neighborhood. Anybody could support it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darnell. I think we'll go to the public hearing, we'll go to the community. How many slips do we have this evening to speak? How many slips do we have this evening to speak?
Chair Rosales, we have 16 slips. Would you like me to go ahead and proceed? With limitations possibly, or?
Yeah, we typically have three minutes per speaker. I would imagine some of the themes are similar. You know what, we'll stick with the three minutes. I want to give everybody their time, so let's stick with three minutes. If you would call them up one at a time?
Perfect, thank you so much. I will go ahead and announce the first three names, but after that, if you would please continue to watch the screen for your name and do not hesitate to kind of pre-stage at either lectern, you will have three minutes to speak and do state your name clearly for the record. So first, it looks like we will have Link, pardon me if I mispronounce, La Tuco. Next would be Lisa Price. After that would be Pat Kimbrell, and following that will be Glenda Kimbrell.
Link, if you would come forward, and as indicated, the rest of you seeing on the screen there would, go ahead, Link, come up right after that. We can get through this maybe relatively quickly. Go ahead, sir.
I'm going to be reading my comments because I have a bad case of CRS. Can't remember crap, so bear with me.
Yeah, if you, everybody bring the mic close to here so we can get everybody.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Link La Tuco. I live on Loma Alta Drive. You have all heard and hopefully read the comments of some of our community residents regarding this project. Some of the adverse impacts discussed include infrastructure issues like sewer flow, parking dangers, traffic flow, stormwater runoff, excessive density, traffic safety issues, just to name a few. But there's one adverse, adverse impact that's even more ominous than the others. It's a 10 on the scale of adverse impact. And what is that? It's the danger of fire. Not just a fire, but a conflagration, a large destructive fire. Furthermore, we don't have to just imagine that happening, we've actually experienced it here on multiple occasions. There is volumes of evidence. We saw it, we smelled it, and we feared it. Here are just a few examples of what a specific adverse impact looks like. In 1993, our nearby city of Laguna Beach experienced fire and winds from 40 miles an hour to 92 miles an hour, and the loss of over 400 residential structures. In 2003, lasting more than a month, the so-called Cedar Fire affected multiple cities and communities throughout San Diego County with wind gusts in excess of 90 miles an hour, and the loss of 2,232 residential structures. In 2007, the Witch Creek Fire also affected multiple cities and communities in San Diego County with recorded winds as high as 100 miles an hour, resulting in the loss of 1,265 residential structures. In 2017, once again in San Diego County, the Lilac Fire experienced severe winds resulting in the death of dozens of thoroughbred horses at the San Luis Rey Downs Training Race Track in Bon Salt and 157 structures. Sadly, we all recently witnessed the carnage that occurred in the seaside city of Lahaina, Maui, Hawaii. Because of the lack of space between the planned home and this development.
Mr. La Tuco, sorry to butcher your name, I'm going to have to cut you off there, your three minutes are up. We do appreciate that you printed it out for us so we can continue reading your comments, but your time is up. We're going to move on to our next speaker.
Good evening. Pleasure to see you all again. I'm going to talk really fast because I think I'm already over before I get started. We have a lot of staff reports on the Planning Commission website that Dane presented, and since our meeting here on August 28th, when you voted unanimously not to approve this project, you said to the developer, you missed the boat here, my concern is the outreach. They did come in outreach. Your drawings are not brought up to speed, go back and try again, you haven't done your homework, you've missed the mark on so many things. The law is the law, but what I notice is not very complete. We already heard, Dane told us, we went from blue, gray, and black to white, gray, and black. The trash cans moved from the side of the unit to the back of the unit. Rear windows are going to be smoked or opaque. But I think we have a bigger issue here. The city of Oceanside is in a predicament. It appears that all the groups within the city can't agree on the land use policy that's going on in this city. One thing said here, one thing said at the city council, one thing said by the staff. And I'm saying over and over, everyone's saying, have to check with the city attorney, have to check with the city attorney, check with the city attorney. Our hands are tied, state law, there's nothing we can do. Well, in a note dated September 27th, the majority of the Oceanside City Council, including the mayor, sent Governor Newsom a signed letter objecting to these state bonus density laws and land use decisions. Deputy Mayor Ryan Keim said, "Land use policy is one of the most critical roles of local government, and for a handful of politicians on the opposite side of the state to pass something that affects residents without consideration of the unintended consequences has been an unmitigated disaster for the city of Oceanside." I absolutely concur. I couldn't agree more. Then this past Friday, October 6th, just three days ago, a city council couldn't decide on the residential density in downtown Oceanside, and the, and the vote goes back to the city. Summing it all up, would a temporary moratorium in Oceanside regarding land use policy be the best move right now? You have all kinds of groups that are trying to fight this. We have to get together. We've got to pull the rope in the same direction. We can go to the state and say, hold on a second, and we have a responsibility to do that.
She just stole some of my thunder, but that's okay. Pat Kimbrell, my family's living in 142 and 146 Loma Alta. Please understand, we're not opposed to homes being built on this property. We are opposed to the size, the scope, and the density that's being proposed. We're asking for a development that is congruent with the surrounding neighborhood. We have recently seen the position of our city council is taking in regards to the density bonus law and the overall detrimental effects it has on residents and cities. The recent letter written by our city council members addressed Governor Newsom stating that council members vehemently object to the litany of litigation, of legislation that passed that removed control away from local jurisdictions. Land use policy is one of the most critical roles of local government. The laws have been passed without consideration of the unintended consequences that have unmitigated disaster for the city of Oceanside. And I quote from Saturday's Union Tribune, "Rapid growth in recent years has prompted Oceanside to look for ways to hit the brakes. Now would be a good time." At the August Planning Commission meeting, the developer was told to, quote, "Consider a better design of development, to collaborate more and engage the community. Show a better plan, spread traffic flow, consider the street to go through from Loma Alta to Crouch, and that this density bonus bandwagon we're on needs a collaborative approach. Show a better plan." That's what we're, what you asked the developer to do. Do you have that tonight? I'm not so sure. In the, in today's staff report, under point three of the discussion, it stated, while size and unit numbers and scale of project has not, I repeat, not changed, the applicant provided a revised color palette. Plus, they agreed to frost four windows, or at least four windows in, in the four homes of the 13. Is this what you're expecting? I hope you would be, you would see more in respect to showing a better plan. We can do better. In the Planning Commission resolution, staff suggesting you approve today, there is nothing said of the standards of the HOA, which were required to be maintained, maintain the development in the future. I did not see anything about HOA requirements, and yet the city's circulation element states the city may, I want to emphasize the word may, there's options here, permit construction of a private street if the HOA or the property, or the property owners provide the acceptable program for financing regular street maintenance. We haven't seen this and we should. I'm not sure any of us would be comfortable with the way these homes are designed, how three cars are supposed to fit into a three-car garage, the sizes of bedrooms and living rooms in two 1,600 square feet homes, the small sizes of the lot, the fire safety issues with the spacing of the homes so close to each other and the lack of ability to evacuate the property during an emergency. These are issues we need to address. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrell.
Good evening. My name is Glenda Kimbrell, and our family's own homes at 146 and 142 Loma Alta Drive. One of the concerns that was stated by the Planning Commission in August was to examine the proposed private cul-de-sac to be through, to be a through street from Loma Alta to Crouch in regards to pedestrian and traffic circulation. The developer stated they chose not to pursue the direction, see your item 410, Attachment 10. This is also mentioned in today's city staff report on page five. Although acceptable by the city staff for the, for the street to remain a cul-de-sac, and I quote, "According to the applicant, the subdivision was designed based on the feasibility of connecting utilities from Loma Alta Drive as opposed to Crouch Street to avoid the need for a sewer lift station or utility easement that would reduce the buildable areas of the proposed, proposed lots," unquote. Meaning, the developer might not be able to build as many homes. Is that reason enough for the city to take this position? A disregard for possibly a better overall plan? And connecting the street from Loma Alta to Crouch is not in conflict with the circulation element policy 3.2 as it stated in your staff report? So let's look at the circulation element 3.2. It says, quote, "The city may permit construction of private streets with individual development projects that the streets do not provide direct through routes between public, public streets." They may, not must. So let's look further into the circulation element and what it says, their goals and objectives. And I'm quoting, "It is to enhance travel choices for current and future residents, to enhance the city's corridors for all modes of transportation, to increase bicycle and pedestrian connections and routes, and this requires improvements that enhance connectivity, livability, and vitality, and for overall safe pedestrian circulation through the city," end quote. Okay, so let's take a look at this proposed development and how it actually restricts and negatively impacts pedestrian and car mobility by making it more congested. It cuts off the ability to pass from one street to another, both streets which have become thoroughfares, to get in, to and from Mesa Drive and Canyon Drive, and ultimately Oceanside Boulevard and Mission Avenue. These are all major corridors, and it cuts off that access. From the August staff report, and I quote, "This proposed cul-de-sac does not have the capacity to provide street parking on one side due to its 32-foot width." Okay, would you want to live in a house where you can't even park in front of your own home? So where will these people park as it is currently proposed on Loma Alta Drive? And that would make it even more congested and dangerous. It is, is it not a better plan to have the street to go through Loma Alta to Crouch Street? Remember, your circulation element says you may, not must.
Thank you, Ms. Kimbrell.
You do not have, so you do have the latitude to make a decision, so please consider that. And again, thank you regarding the 23 proposed large homes within a one-block radius on Loma Alta Drive.
Thank, thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Audrey Thornton, and I live on Mesa Drive, 2606 Mesa Drive. I am a legal aid attorney. I help people with housing issues. Looking at this, I think my neighbors have spoken very well about the particular adverse impacts and the density problems that are going to have. I just feel like the developer has provided insufficient justification for these adverse impacts, and they can't justify the requested density bonus. They do have to provide a justification, and they do have to look at adverse impacts, on the grounds of building one affordable unit. They're building 12 probably million-dollar homes and one affordable unit, which is going to be rent, not even owned. This is a lot between two narrow streets, as my neighbors have described. It's, we live in one of the oldest neighborhoods in San Diego County. It's beautiful. There are mainly single-family homes, mainly one stories, some two stories, and most of them are in 10,000-square-foot lots. The developer would like to squeeze in 13 houses, and the real ringer is three stories. They're going to put three-story homes just to be able to increase the square footage of each of these homes so they can sell them for a million dollars or more, I mean, probably more. And I'm just, I'm, I'm, I knew that there was going to be houses there, we all did. Let's buy, let's build some houses. Let's, you know, it's a big lot, but this is really over the top. So basically, I feel like, yes, it's going to be incompatible with the surrounding community. I don't think it's justified. I think there's a huge amount of problems that my neighbors are bringing up. The fires are very scary. I look down at the, I look down towards 76 and the lowlands there and just wait for the next fire that's going to come rushing up, which is only one way that it could come, but that's a big one. So rushing here to make sure I get my three minutes in. Basically, I think it would be misleading and probably a lie for the city of Oceanside to say that they're addressing the housing crisis, which I know is very real, and this project is not addressing it. These homes are going to be, there's going to be one supposedly affordable home, which is going to be rented, and 12 are going to be sold for more than a million dollars to Bay Area transplants that want to come down here and work remotely. And I know some who have, and a couple, over the last couple of years, the low interest rates, a lot of them did. Anyway, thank you, and I hope you take those into consideration. I hope you listen to my neighbors. Thank you.
Hello. Hello. Connie Ko, and I live on Lomita and, where do I live? Lomita and Crouch, right on the corner, right next to this development. And after all you've seen and heard, this developer, this novice developer, do you believe that he can really pull off 50 feet from the top to the bottom?
Ms. Ko, I'm going to interrupt you. If you would put that in front of Ms. Ko.
And have 13 houses?
Thank you.
And have one of them not fall on the other one? I mean, the engineering idea. And does, does the law say that you only have to put in a rental unit? A property that's going to be rented? That's the question that I have. And the way that things are in the city of Oceanside, these people are going to have heavy payments. There's a strong possibility that they're going to turn their three-car garage into an ADU, which probably they will be able to do. So then you have possibly another 13 units. You could easily end up with 23 developments over there and not just 13. I could be wrong. Oh, here we go. So there's the elevation, 50 feet from the bottom street to the very top. That's a lot. That's over one power pole. Our pole is usually between 40 and 60 feet. There, see, thank you. This is my associate here. Anyway, the thing is, is that I'd, I'd like to really see if the law says that these units can just be rented. I thought it was affordable housing. Is it affordable for sale or just a rental? My goodness, a rental unit? That's disgraceful. You guys should not approve this project.
Thank you, Ms. Ko.
Good evening, Roger Davenport. I live at 541 Crouch, about a block down the hill from this. One thing I was glad to see in the presentation is we're going to get gutters and sidewalks on Crouch Street because in 4.01, the documents that were out there, there was no mention of that. And in item 29, it talks about doing it on Loma Alta but not on Crouch. And in 4.02, it says no frontage improvements along Crouch Street, so I think those need to be changed because 4.03 and 4.04 show that as part of the scope of work. As far as needing housing, our RENA goals for Oceanside for medium and high income are already met. We already have enough things in the pipeline to meet our RENA goals for 2029. So when you say that we need housing, we need low-income housing. We don't need high-income housing. So putting one rental unit and 12 big houses is not helping. I did go to the meeting that was held on the site, and I, one thing that came out of it that was good was he assured us that there was going to be no natural gas piped into the subdivision. I'd like to have that added to the conditions because if we do put natural gas into that, they will never meet our payment action plan requirements that we have for 2050 and 2035. And finally, I, I wanted to just mention, you know, I looked at the table of waivers, and they're talking about, you know, putting 3,200-square-foot homes on as low as a 2,200 square-foot area. The lot area waiver is for a lot 3.6 times smaller than the norm. And other ones range from 27% to 72% of the norm, you know, for things like fences, they want to go up as high as 10 feet instead of six. It's just, you know, when we talk about it's too dense for our neighborhood, it doesn't meet, doesn't fit the neighborhood. That's what we're talking about. Being able to walk from roof to roof is not a part of our neighborhood. So I would suggest that they go back and, and reduce their, their income from this project a little bit and maybe make it nine houses with two affordable units instead of 13 with one. That would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Hello, I'm Cindy Davenport, also on Crouch Street, 541. Our house was built in 1935. It's about 1,100 square feet. And so something not too much bigger than that would be being much more in sync with our neighborhood. It looks like 11 units are going to be 3,200 square feet. Does anyone really want to heat and cool big houses like that? And also, probably one reason why it's 3,200 square feet is because it's for a three-car garage? I mean, that's adding extra expense to a home, making it more expensive for someone to consider buying there. And as already said, we've already met our RENA goals for higher income. And so what, what we need are starter homes, you know? We need, and, you know, 1,500 square feet, actually 1,600 square feet, two of the homes are planned to be that in this development. You know, why not more like that? It's, it's affordable, and, you know, there's, there's just going to be more and more energy costs. Again, heating, cooling of 3,200-square-foot home is just not reasonable. Again, stress not putting in gas lines. Indoor air quality has been proven to be detrimental if you're using natural gas. And also, there, I hadn't heard anyone talk about the pool. Apparently, there's going to be a small pool. So that should definitely not be heated with gas either, but why would you put in a pool when we're going to be continuously in a drought? We don't officially have a drought this year, but that's not going to last. And there is a beautiful new pool at El Corazon. Again, you could make the yards bigger, you could, you know, mitigate some of these detrimental effects. Also, listen to every, everyone who has attended the meetings, I mean, 13 homes is just too much for two acres. And at the last meeting, several neighbors said, "Well, you know, can't you make a big enough profit with just nine homes?" You know, really? So there's, no one is for 13 homes on two acres. And also, we were told that maybe a private homeowner can put in a gate so that they can access Crouch Street. I guess that's one option. Now, Crouch Street is better for accessing transit. It's a pretty quick walk to Mesa, or down Crouch, you can access the Sprinter as well as a bus. So that's just something that would improve, improve quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I step in the Gladiator pitch-up for sec.
If you would actually put your item on the, on the...
In any case, I think I can explain it from here.
Sir, can I, can I get you, though, to use the microphone? Thank you.
In any case, folks, this is what I'm going to be looking at from my front deck.
Again, if you would put it there so we can see it? Thank you.
My front deck, I'm going to be looking at these tombstones.
Sir, the microphone?
Oh, I didn't think I needed one. I sing in a rock and roll band. So in any case, I'm going to be looking at these, what I call tombstones. Basically, these are row houses that we see between PCH and the railroad tracks. They belong down there, higher density. Our neighborhood, it's, I've lived there for 30 years. I've never seen anything like this in the Loma Alta area. Also, our Loma Alta area, we have tons of apartment buildings, tons of high density, all down Canyon. There must be 4,000 or 5,000 people that live from Canyon, and now they're building a veterans, which is about 100, it's five, four stories now, down off Oceanside Boulevard. So main point I'm making is it doesn't belong there. It's impacting me the most out of anyone here because I'm going to be looking straight down into these people's backyards. They're going to have frosted windows, but that's not going to make a difference to me. I have spotlights that go on all night long. So in any case, my next point is sewage. Have you guys ever been down by Larry's Beach Club off Oceanside Boulevard and smelled the backup? Our sewer system can't handle too much more. I surf straight off Oceanside Boulevard. All the runoff from fertilizer, brake fluid, everything else is straight down there, which is causing these red tides. I personally believe, I'm not an expert, but I've been surfing that water there for 35 years, and I've seen it go from nice blue to gray to red every spring. So that's my point. And then my last point is going to be, if anybody built this in any of your side yards, four, three to four feet off my property line, would you want it? I doubt it. I doubt you'd want this in your backyard because this is in my backyard. And that's about all I got to say. So use your moral character. I know they got the law on their side with the SB 9, 10, and 11, but you know, that's probably going to come on as an issue, and we're probably going to fight it and bring it up to the Ninth Circuit, and then after that, we'll go further than that. The people of California, because they have basically stripped cities of their city charters, which I personally believe they were getting into deeper constitutional issues. If the voters can't vote for how they want their communities to look, in a fair way, of course, well then, where the hell do we live now?
Thank you.
My name is James Burnett, and I live at 153 Loma Alta Drive. I wanted to put this up so that you could take a good look at it because the private street is an interesting topic, especially when you look at the math of this entire project, because it seems like, based on the square footage, that the reason it's being maintained as a private street is because it wants to be recovered later at a different time, which has a relationship with the low-income unit as well. If you'll look at the amount of square footage that's being held in common areas for the water bladder and the surrounding perimeter so that the developer can come back because they will own some of these lots. Tonight, we've heard them talk about a low-income rental. Well, they can change their mind on that rental at any time they want to. That's, that's a little concerning, especially since the transparency of the developer has been quite questionable. And just so the staff knows, we heard that you thanked them for their involvement, but if you knew, if you knew their arrogant, rash attitude at their community council meeting, if you knew how they were belittling and talking to some of the community members, it would have been nice to have some representation. But anyway, I would like for you to keep another number in your mind, if you wouldn't, that's 1,200. 1,200 is a number that I'm going to come back to because we keep hearing about there is a shortage of homes that are available in Oceanside. If you'll look at the city's website under short-term rentals, under vacation rentals, there are 1,200 single-family resident that have been converted into vacation rentals. And having gone and looked at the tax records, you will see that big, big developers own most of these, especially in the downtown area. The small people are being bought out, and they're building more homes, but it's not benefiting the residents of Oceanside. And if you'll look at who owns a very large percentage of Oceanside in the vacation rentals, you'll realize that we do have homes that are available. They're just becoming only available to certain people that own the property. So I hope that you'll look into the transparency of the square footage. A through street would work, they just don't want it.
Hello, good evening. My name's Keegan McNamara, and I came to speak in support of this project. I've known Scott for a long time. I know him as a responsible and thoughtful developer of sustainable infill properties. I know that change is tough, where any, you know, site that has been undeveloped and something, someone proposes something, it's a difficult thing for, you know, to see something changing in a neighborhood. I want to stress a few things. You know, this project has no impacts that are unmitigated, or it's a technical term, but no impacts to traffic, noise, air quality, or the environment. There's some objections to traffic. We're talking about 13 homes. That's not a traffic issue. Even the 10 that are across the street, 23, that has no impact on traffic. Sorry, it doesn't. I mean, in terms of the size, I mean, that's everyone's preference. I, I get it, people, you know, may think these are too big. I will say the economics of getting any housing development to pencil these days is nearly impossible. Costs are so expensive. Interest rates have obviously gone up, and so just to get a project to pencil, it's easy to say just make it smaller, make it fewer units, but then what happens is nothing That's all, I guess that's all I've got to say. Well, oh, one last point. In terms of the fire, that, that didn't make sense to me. These homes are all sprinkled. Like, you know, this isn't, I don't understand how that's going to create additional fire hazards. I mean, quoting all the tragic fires that we've had in our history was kind of dramatic, but this isn't a backcountry development where we're impacted by that. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Leckis?
Hi, Christina Leckis. I work in North County, and I'd like more opportunities to live where I work, so I support this project.
Hi, everybody. Kathy Doobie, 2612 Lomita Street. I was here last time we had this meeting, and yes, you are in my backyard. Change is inevitable. I don't think anybody's saying keep it dirt. My big concern, I think, tonight was bringing up the extra 10 units, which is in the same vicinity. The size of the lots are crazy. I'm on a quarter acre. It just seems ridiculous to me. Moving garbage cans and changing your paint color really doesn't do anything aesthetically, and how much money did that cost? I have no idea. It may be acceptable or legal, but it's not acceptable for my area. Thank you for your concerns.
Thank you.
If I may remind the speakers coming up, you can pre-game, basically, and pre, you know, get next to the lecterns so we can move quickly.
Go ahead, ma'am. For the record, give us your name and bring the mic up if you need to. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Household, and my husband and I own 129 and 127 Crouch Street, and we've lived there since the early 90s. I think for me, one of the main things that I would like the developer to consider is the impact for the neighbors and be, being a better neighborly developer. The top concerns in my mind and others is the density, the height, the traffic and speed of Loma Alta, the encroachment on neighbor, the neighbors that bound the property, and overall impact. So I have a request that goes beyond giving us little colored dots to pick our choices. My number one request is, out of courtesy to the neighbors, to put up story poles so we have a good idea on how our homes are going to be impacted from our view, et cetera. Number two, I would like the setbacks to be marked, the true setbacks, because it's very difficult to tell by the drawings what those truly are, and so have those setbacks put out in a timely manner so the neighborhood can see their impact. Number three is a true traffic and speed study. I came up from Canyon just this morning. People are racing down that road like crazy, and there's all kinds of cars on both sides where the apartments are, so there is a traffic issue already and a speed issue. And number four, I would like to hear about plans to potentially widen Loma Alta because it, my mother lives in a neighborhood similar to this, where there's no parking on the streets. It is going to fall over into Loma Alta, and I'd like to see what the plan is to widen. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Karen Devine, and I live at 134 Loma Alta Drive. And my major concern with this project is, of course, the density. We moved there in 2014. We bought this house, we remodeled it, we meshed with the neighborhood. We didn't build three-story monstrosity. We, you know, kept our color palette. If you drove by our house, you wouldn't know that it was built in 1959, but it, we just, we, you know, kept it within the neighborhood parameters to keep our neighbors happy. And I don't know about where these people live as far as the traffic goes. I will sit on my front step and watch these people race up and down my street as I'm watching kids on their bicycles and the elderly walking up and down. We don't have the sidewalks. Yes, they say they're going to put the sidewalks in, only in that little area. Regardless, there's going to be more traffic, and I'm concerned for the safety of the people that walk and ride their bikes. And I'm also concerned if this project does go through, we do need some kind of walkability... And I'm also concerned, if this project does go through, we do need some kind of walkability to Crouch. It would be great if it was a, you know, like a, maybe, you know, somewhere where, like a fire truck could come on the other side, in case those homes did catch on fire, and it wasn't accessible from Loma Alta, a fire truck might need to come through there. So that's my major concerns, and I hope the owner-developer is listening, and I hope they take this into consideration. And I come from a place of love, and I, I just want our neighborhood to remain our neighborhood, not something out of the future that looks crazy and doesn't mesh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pedro Tavares. I'm an architect locally, I work all over San Diego County. My wife and my two kids, we currently rent an apartment in San Marcos. And I just want to bring sort of the attention to the realities of finding housing in North County right now, especially housing for sale. And I went to the community outreach meeting that was held a few weeks ago at the property, and I went there mainly to find out a little bit more about it, see if I could sign an interest list or something with the developer, because it is close to impossible right now to find housing. And it's clear to me that everybody here in opposition to this project is not in that position. You got a lot of privileged people that may have secured their properties long ago, that are now saying, not in my backyard, which is very common throughout San Diego County.
This is not a back-and-forth. Go ahead, Mr. Tavares, please.
I looked a bit, like, into the area. Within, you know, a few hundred feet of the property, you can, you can see through public records that there are a total of two houses that sold in the last 12 months, five homes that sold within the last 36 months. There is not inventory, it's obvious, with a lot of language coming through all over the place. San Diego County needs housing, the state of California needs housing, the city of Oceanside needs housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've run through the list of those submitting a slip to speak. It doesn't mean that anybody who did not submit a slip can still come forward before we close the public hearing. Anybody like to come forward before I close the public hearing?
Sorry, I signed up, I guess I didn't get on the queue. My name is Michael Kenner, I live up off, got a one-acre lot on the corner of Crouch and Lomita. And a few years ago, I tried to split the lot into three third-of-an-acre lots. I was told that I had to move ten, five telephone poles and do curbs, gutters, and sidewalks. Well, anyway, so I'm a little bit off-leash tonight, but I'd like to try to get at the truth. These places are really ugly, and, and they're all crammed in, but we get to look at this south tenement thing that's three-story walk-ups. Are you kidding? I mean, let's, let's kind of get real about what's nice housing in Oceanside. And no elevators or anything like that, these places are terrible, and there are too many of them. You cram five, two 10-pound cats into a five-pound bag, and I'm kind of embarrassed that this has gotten this far. I think the planning commission should have maybe taken a breath and said, you know, we've got a neighborhood here, should we trash it? Or should we try to make it better? Could we put the telephone lines and power lines underground, do curbs and gutters and sidewalks for all the baby strollers, and the joggers, and the walkers, and the, you know, everybody? Do something for the city, for the neighborhood. And I've, I've been a lot of places all over the world, and I'm very grateful, and I, Oceanside's my home, and it's the home of all my neighbors. And we're here to try to bring some, some reality to this whole thing. Anyway, please consider our plight. Thank you.
All right, anybody else before we close the public hearing? Okay, public hearing is closed, we'll bring it back to the commission for any questions. We'll start with questions, or before we go to comments and/or deliberation, Commissioner Obama, go ahead.
There'd be some other guys. Okay, my, I have a couple of questions, but the first one, I just wanted to ask just an idea, like, density bonus allows them to put on, you know, so many units per acre and such, and then setbacks can be reduced and all this stuff. Does it also address the amount of square footage a house can have?
Commissioner Obama, there's no limits within density bonus on the size of a home.
So it's pretty much arbitrary to the developer. There is, you mean, you're saying that they can go, they could have maybe done this even more dense, I mean, as far as more square footage if they chose? There's no, like, limits to square footage then on a density bonus, on a unit? That's kind of what I'm saying.
That's correct. There's no limit on a, on the size of a home.
So that's just in the rules?
And they could have done more density had they had a larger reservation requirement. So if they put, set aside two homes as an example, they could have added more homes to this project.
Okay. I guess the other, the other question was, they will have to have an HOA then with this project?
They will have an HOA, because there's some common facilities that will have to be maintained privately.
And that, and that, could we actually impose a vacation rental-type moratorium? You couldn't do vacation rentals on this project, could we actually ask that of?
As a density bonus project in our city, it's prohibited, any of the units within the development would be prohibited from being short-term rented, yes.
No short-term rentals, that's, that's one better thing, I guess. And then I guess there was one more thing, and I'm going to just punt to someone else, and I'll come back to it.
I don't see anybody taking your punt, Louise. I spoke too soon. Vice Chair Morrissey, go ahead.
One of the things I did read was, we're going to widen the street, and somebody brought that up. Can we, is it seven foot they're going to widen Loma Alta?
Perhaps the applicant could best answer that, I'm not sure if his engineer is here tonight, we don't have any representatives from the engineering division. Dane's looking at the plans right now for what they call for.
Okay. While he's looking at that, you know, the ADU is fairly new concept, and there are rules and regulations for ADUs. Now, they can't arbitrarily use their garage for an ADU, can they? Am I mistaken there?
Vice Chair Morrissey, under ADU law, you can convert your garage to an ADU without replacing that parking.
Okay, so they could make a garage unit an ADU?
Certainly could. A future homeowner could do that.
You want to go again?
Well, yeah, if there's no one, I was going to let somebody else speak. Okay, back to the cul-de-sac versus no cul-de-sac, thoroughfare for the kids, all that. So it's, I was trying to go back and try to read the staff report, I know I read it someplace, that the, the staff actually looked at it and basically said that it wasn't something that could be done because of traffic and engineering for the city.
Commissioner Obama, can you just make sure I'm understanding your question correctly? Is it that we couldn't ask them to push through the road?
Or that it wasn't something that, I guess, it wasn't something that would flow with the traffic, with the city's engineering department, to have one public street and another public street connected with a private street? There was something about that I read. Is that something that, just can clarify that to me, about what the rule is, that you can't connect two public streets with a private street?
So Commissioner Obama, I'm not familiar with any rules that would not allow that. What we do have here is, this is a density bonus project with proposed design. We don't have the ability or the discretion to say, Mr. Developer, go back to the drawing board and, and redesign this to have a through street. In addition, there's no circulation element policies that would require this street to be connected.
Maybe that's what, maybe that's what I read, because I still think it wouldn't, the idea of having a straight street rather than a cul-de-sac wouldn't take away from the quantity of units that the developer is able to build, but it would give the neighborhood some access through and not have to provide, like, if you put in a walkway through a couple of these property lines, you're going to have like a fence with like a sidewalk, which is probably dangerous to have two fences and a kid walking back and forth in there, you could probably get mugged. But if you had an actual street, it wouldn't be the same. And I just thought that, when we asked, talked about that last time, I didn't think that was actually a pretty good thing, but they made it sound like the neighborhood didn't want it, but from what I'm hearing, the neighborhood would like it better than if it wasn't. I mean, it's, from what I heard tonight, I, I didn't hear anything that was like, we don't want to, you know, through-streets, so I just wondered, maybe the developer can tell us maybe more, maybe it costs too much money, I don't know. There's still a lot of paving involved in a cul-de-sac, and it still could fit the amount of units, so I'd like to kind of hear maybe why that rationale wasn't chosen.
Well, if I could, if I could continue that theme, because I think Commissioner Dodds and I surfaced a bit ago the question, or the idea of a pedestrian bike-throughfare, which I think, you know, looking at the plan, could work, and I think a couple of the speakers noted that it would make it easier to access the transit, which is down on Crouch, which is, you know, city policy-encouraged type of stance in terms of development, so, you know, and maybe as a compromise, that pedestrian bike punch-through would be something that would, would work. Again, we can't prescribe this, it's a density bonus project, but it's something that I think that we could maybe strongly get behind, so I'll leave it there. But Dane, are you still looking for, did we get the answer, question, question answered?
So I couldn't find the actual width on the plans. I may have just measured it on our PDF viewer. I believe it was nine feet, as, I think that's what was stated in the staff report, at the largest point. It obviously weans out towards the edges of the frontage.
Thank you. Mr. Darnell, if you, if you wouldn't mind coming back to the dais and walk us through again, one more time, the conversation or the discussion about the throughfare, whether it's a street, whether it's a pedestrian bike only. I understand that has an impact on your project, but I think there's a real interest in trying to find something that would work, that would allow access back and forth through those two public streets?
Yes, we spent a lot of time, obviously, this is about two and a half years into the project, working with staff, back and forth, all different departments, engineering, et cetera, and I believe that their staff report sites, I know that some of the residents also spoke about it too, that it's not part of the circulation plan. We feel that a cul-de-sac is the best, I'm sorry, here, I have the wrong document, that's why. Connecting the private street between Loma Alta Drive and Crouch Street would conflict with this policy, last page, last sentence on page five. In terms of safety, insurance, liability, you know, all types of reasons, we feel like the cul-de-sac is the best design in terms of not having dark areas that bad things can happen as people cut through from one to the other. I know this has been private property, and people have been walking across it, potentially or other lots around there, but regrettably, we're not in a position to modify the design to allow for another path to go into a private, private owner's lot, a private lot.
Yeah, I struggle to understand why a lit pathway that's open to pedestrians or bikes 24/7 couldn't work? I mean, it's not, doesn't seem like a really difficult investment to make in terms of providing some compromise to this project. I understand you did color palette changes and frosted windows, but this just seems like something that would inch it further in terms of addressing some of the concerns of the community, but it sounds like you're not open to that idea.
We, we studied this stuff over and over and over again, and regrettably, it's not something that we have an ability.
Any other commissioners have any?
Chairman Rosales, we get back to Vice Chair Morrissey's question.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you look at the cross-sections on an attachment 4.04, attachment four, on sheet TM2, there's two cross-sections, one for Crouch Street and one for Loma Alta Drive. Both, both frontages of each project show improvements, but the, the width of the improvement varies because the, the road isn't symmetrical there. So there is going to be asphalt widening, there's going to be curb gutter and sidewalk installed on both frontages.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You have one more.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Obama.
Okay, I have one more thing I can get out from my voice. We had one of our speakers talk a little bit about how all the laws are changing, our own city is kind of grappling with this whole density bonus and all this stuff's going on right now. Thank you. Moratorium was actually brought up. Is there any water to that, or is that just like a lawsuit waiting to happen? I mean, because it's, the law right now gives everybody the opportunity to do this, and they should be given all those opportunities, but it's like, we're kind of in flux, we're trying to find out, can we actually go to the state and have Gavin Newsom change his law? Or is it something that we just are stuck with? Even though our, all the cities get together and write letters and stuff, there's no way of holding this project back possibly, but maybe future ones, or what's the vibe with that? Like, what's, what's happening with that? Maybe Barbara, do you have any insight with the legal parts of this?
Yeah, a moratorium that would prohibit the construction of housing, or downzone anything from, I can't remember the, the date, 2019, maybe, where?
January 1st, 2018.
2018. It is specifically prohibited by SB 330.
And?
It's the Housing Accountability Act, and so, yes, to your point, it would be a lawsuit waiting to happen.
Okay. Just trying to ask all those questions.
And to piggyback on that, I keep pigging back on all your comments, Louise, thank you for teeing things up. Currently, city planner, I hate to put you on the spot, but are there any internal discussions happening, staff or council, about pushing back and something more, I guess, on a formal level, letters, sponsoring, legislation, anything that you know of or you can share?
Certainly. Chairman Rosales, so the, outside of the letter that was cited by a couple of the speakers tonight, there's been no discussion about pushing back against the state, and, on an official capacity, pushing back against state not complying with law. So there's been zero discussion at staff level, at least, to my knowledge, of pursuing something in that, in that, in that vein.
The only thing we can do is vote the current administration out and start over.
Yep.
And that would do a lot for impact fees and the, and the intended purpose for SEQA, that is not what's, how it's being administered now, and on and on and on it goes. So I think that this developer has put forth a project that is compliant with the law, and has gone through the due process, and, and it's not the Politburo from Russia that's telling us that we have to build this, there's a process, and, and we've gone through that process, and fortunately, when we sit here, we have to abide by the, the laws of the state, and we know that, as you homeowners have said, that you've lived there for 30 years, and while we certainly empathize with you, the law is the law, and things change, and so I'm going, going to vote for this project, just because that's the law, so.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr.?
I'd like to make a motion, if there's any more discussion.
Folks, 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 if I, folks, if I could remind you to be courteous, folks, if I could remind you to be courteous about the process, the process is over for you at the moment, you can gauge us in the lobby if you'd like afterwards, but we're going to, I think, use Mr.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Morrissey's intro to tee up a motion, go ahead.
Yeah, my motion is to recommend that we go with the staff to confirm issuance of a SEQA, Guidelines, Article 19, Section 15332, and approve the tentative map T223 Development Plan D224, and density bonus DB223 by adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 2023 P19 with findings and conditions of approval attached herein.
Thank you, we have a motion by, for approval by Vice Chair Morrissey, second by any commissioners?
We have a motion by, for approval by Vice Chair Morrissey, seconded by any commissioners? I'll second that motion to put it to, go ahead, Commissioner Ballma.
I would just like to state why I will probably be not voting for this project, even though it's totally legal. I totally understand. And we have voted for density projects on this dais several times, but the only thing I don't like about this one that I just can't seem to stomach is the architectural design sucks. So I can't get behind it. If it was, it was a decent-looking project, I would be totally behind you guys for your, all your reasons for why you're doing this. But you've really taken, and this one guy called it a tombstone, and I have to agree with him. I mean, I'm an architect and I just look at this going, there's, there's something you guys could have done better here and you could have given the neighborhood at least something they could have, maybe kind of embraced a little tiny bit. But this is hard to embrace. And we have had several great-looking density bonus, not great, but whatever, better-looking density bonus projects that have come through here that the staffs liked, that we've liked, but this one, I can't. So I'm sorry, I have to vote against you, but that's what I'm feeling. I just can't do it. Give me a chance, I'd throw it up.
Thank you, Commissioner Ballma. Any other discussion before we vote? I, I'm struggling with this too, but I'm with you, Vice Chair Morrissey, that we're, go ahead, Commissioner Dodds.
I also am struggling with this, but we are bound by, by law to accept some of this. And it feels like I have to choke this down. I do hear you and we do, I do empathize with your plight. I wish there were other recourse that we had. And I know you say that we can fight, but we're just a commission that either says yea or nay. And we are bound by stipulations and laws and I'm sorry, my apologies.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Dodds. Thank you, Commissioner Dodds. Yeah, I think I remarked last time when this was before us in August and in a similar project, well, not similar, a project that followed on the heels in Fire Mountain, that if we're going to be, I'll use the term stuck with development, high-density development in neighborhoods that where the interest is not so strong, I've made the comment that we need to have quality projects. And this is unfortunately not something that looks great. I will be supporting the motion, but I'll remind the developers that you really need to bring quality projects to, to the neighborhoods because we're getting tired of this sort of cadence of discussions. We need quality projects that fit within the community. Let's go ahead and vote.
Let the record show that the motion passes 4-2 with Commissioners Ballma and Malik voting no.
Thank you. We're going to go to the next item on the agenda. I misspoke earlier. I misspoke earlier that there was only one public hearing. Sir, if we could get the chamber to clear so we can continue with our agenda, we have one more item for discussion tonight. Item five is consideration of a conditional use permit to allow indoor storage of up to 2,800 gallons of corrosive liquids and oxidizing material located at 2950 San Luis Rey Road. We'll start with disclosures. I read the staff report. I just, that's all I have for disclosures. Vice Chair Morrissey?
No report.
Commissioner Dodds?
I just read the staff report.
Commissioner Ballma?
Staff report and very familiar with this location.
Commissioner Anthony?
A staff report and familiar with the location.
And Commissioner Malik?
I read the staff report.
Thank you. Go ahead, Rob.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. Rob Demahowski with the Planning Commission and here to present Alpha Water Systems, a conditional use permit for pool chemicals supply. The project site is located at the corner of San Luis Rey Road and Villa del Norte and is developed with a 7,480 square foot industrial building occupied and owned by Alpha Water Systems. The property has a general plan land use designation and a zoning designation of light industrial and is located within the airport neighborhood planning area. The request is for a conditional use permit to allow the storage of hazardous chemicals that exceed 120 gallons or more of corrosive liquids and 1,000 pounds of oxidizing materials in accordance with Article 30 of the zoning ordinance. Alpha Water Systems is, is an existing wholesale swimming supply business that sells a variety of pool chemicals and general supplies to pool professionals, hotels, apartment complexes, homeowners associations, and so on. And to serve the needs of customers in Oceanside, the applicant is requesting additional storage up to 2,800 gallons of corrosive liquids and oxidizing materials, including sodium hypochlorite and muriatic acid, which are common pool chemicals used daily in swimming pools. As identified on the floor plan, the pool chemicals would be stored in separate areas within the warehouse section of the business, and there are fire extinguishers and spill kits located throughout the area as required by the law. The additional storage of pool chemicals is requested to meet demand in the Oceanside area. Hazardous materials must be stored and handled in accordance with, with city regulations and county regulations. And all chemicals are prepackaged and will not be opened, dispensed, or repackage on the site in any form. They will be sold as is in the containers that they are packaged in. Chemical storage is a consistent use in the limited industrial zone district and is compatible with existing and potential industrial uses within this business park, industrial park. And the conditions have, of, the recommended conditions of approval would ensure that the proposed use is not detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. As such, staff is recommending Planning Commission confirm issuance of a categorical exemption for SEQA and adopt a Planning Commission resolution approving the conditional use permit with findings and conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is available for any questions related to the type of pool chemicals and so on.
Thank you, Rob. One quick question, I think it's in the staff report, but this was reviewed by the Oceanside Fire Department and I'm guessing because it's prepackaged, there's no need for any containment structures?
Chair Rosales, the, there is a condition of approval that requires them to have a, a plan for addressing that. So there, there would be protocol if there were, were chemicals spilled, but with them being prepackaged, they would need to obtain a building permit for any shelving or structures as well as comply with, with all fire department requirements regarding storage and spillage if that were to occur.
Okay. But bottom line, the fire department took a look at this and they were okay with the amounts.
Correct. They, they reviewed the proposal and are fine as, as with the recommended conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Yeah, Commissioner Dodds, go ahead.
My question is from, from a safety standpoint. I didn't read anything about a, any monitoring for, for O2 displacement or oxygen displacement. If there is a chemical spill, is there, is there a requirement for, for O2 monitoring?
Commissioner Dodds, I'm not familiar with that aspect of, of the project, as, as just mentioned, with the fire department and the building division both reviewing. The project and the chemical storage does have to comply with all applicable city codes as well as county regulations. So I would assume that if there's a, a need for a ventilation system or a, a protocol that would be addressed, as you may know, some of the pool chemicals, you cannot mix certain types of acid with, with the other type. It would create a toxic gas in some cases. And with these being prepackaged, I don't believe the concern was as, as elevated as if they were, if they were actually manufacturing or preparing the chemicals, there, there would be different protocol.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Anthony?
I'd like to know, since the fire department is the department, what about the chemicals? As far as the hazardous materials, because you do have materials here that get oxidized that feed fires, things of that nature. So there's no secondary containment, spills? We require that.
Commissioner Anthony, with the storage being indoors, the Water Utilities also has conditions that there, that there cannot be drainage into a, a storm drain and there would be internal containment with, with the facility. I'd have to refer to the conditions here to see if there's a, the specific language on, on containment. And the applicant is here and may be able to offer more on, since they already, they are already operating as a chemical supply business, they, they have to comply with these same regulations. This request involves more storage capacity, but the overall regulations and permitting requirements would, would be the same.
Commissioner Anthony, I could add a little bit to Rob's response. There are a number of conditions of approval from the building division that would require the hazardous materials to be considered. I could read a couple for you as an example. Submit a hazardous material form from the county of San Diego. Submit storage rack plans that have been engineered with engineering calculations. Mechanical plants must show exhaust fans for all areas of hazardous fumes. The, the plans must clearly show hazardous materials that will be used. There's another one here. The manufacture of products and all raw materials must be shown in the building code requirements. A full fire engineer's report must, may be required for, at plan review. So those, those concerns have been addressed by both the planning, I'm sorry, the building division and the fire department.
Thank you. I think we're good for the moment, Rob. Don't see anybody lighting up. I think we probably don't need the applicant at this point. It is a public hearing. Any slips, speakers?
Chair Rosales, no slips this evening on this item.
Thank you. I see the chambers is generally empty, but I'll ask a question anyway. Anybody want to come forward and address the commission before we close the public hearing? Great. Don't see anybody coming forward. Public hearing is closed. Anybody want to offer a motion or any other questions?
Motion to approve conditional use permit, CUP 22-UR0026, to allow indoor storage of up to 2,800 gallons of corrosive liquids and oxidizing materials accessory to a swimming pool supply business at 2950 San Luis Rey Road. Alpha Water Systems Incorporated, applicant Alpha Water Systems Incorporated.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Malik. Commissioner Ballma, it looks like you want to do a second on that?
I'll do that, a strong second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval. Let's go ahead and vote.
Let the record show that the motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. That concludes our public hearings for tonight. Thank you, Rob. Next item on the agenda, appeal of city planner's determination. We have nothing listed underneath that, no discussion items tonight and no, nothing under miscellaneous action. So we'll go to commissioner reports. I don't think I have anything really pressing to alert the rest of the commissioners or city planner on, but, you know, maybe as we go around, I'll remind, remember something, but nothing pressing. Vice Chair Morrissey, how about you?
No report.
Commissioner Ballma?
I have to make a report on the excessive amount of dirt being taken out of North River Farms up the street and onto like various farming, you know, communities. But do they, I mean, I thought the, all the time that we did this North River Farms that they were going to use their dirt on, on the north side to fill in on the south side. So do you know anything at all why they're exporting so much? I mean, I'm talking, it's been two months of at least 100 or more trucks a day. It's like a freeway of trucks. And I don't know when, I'm sure who's going to repair all the, I'm not sure if there's going to be road problems, but I'm just saying it's an excessive amount. I mean, we were told at one time from the developer that was two weeks. We thought, oh, that's not a big deal, two weeks. And now it's into two months. So I just wondered if you knew anything about the amount of dirt and what's going on?
Commissioner Ballma, I know a little bit about the topic. So what you're probably seeing trucked off-site is overburdened, it's not suitable to build on. They may be taking it to other farms for, to use for agricultural purposes. You know, the top layer of that was farmed for decades and so now that's no longer going to be farmed. It contains materials that are not just soil, but also vegetation. It's not suitable typically to build on. So they are going to export the majority of the, of the cut from that project to the south side of the project for, to fill that and bring it up out of the floodplain. And that operation's expected to take about six months.
What was the requirement for over X and was it like five feet? Because it's a lot.
I, I don't know that answer, man.
Because it's just seemed like, you know, most people, when you build a house, it's three foot. You have to, you know, take out your top soil and get to native. This is like amazing. You guys would be amazed if you saw what was going on out there. Anyway, so you think it's, so it is, it's a big site. There's a lot of like, you're right, there's a lot of like compost, whatever, like there's a lot of humus and a lot of great, of course, it was prime agriculture at one time, so you can imagine the, the amount of great soil that there is out there that we're just throwing on, onto other people's land. So, okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Morrissey, I'm going to come back to you because I know you had something. I just looked over and I thought, he has something.
Yeah, no, thank you, Chair Rosales. So I was walking at the end of the pier because I'd heard there is a restaurant.
It is.
But it's a kiosk. I thought they were talking about the big building. So walking around the building, it's in disrepair. And so I think even though there's no tenant there, that, that does represent Oceanside and I would hope whoever needs to hear this, hears that they need to go give it a paint job, fix some of the outside siding, because that still represents our city and that's an icon. So that's my report.
Is that a city-owned, you know, structure at the end of the pier? Because the city owns the pier, correct?
Chairman Rosales, the city does own that structure. It is under lease with a third party to operate it. They have plans, they're working on plans to renovate that structure.
That's a good thing. Can you, can you let us know, is it in your purview to let us know what's going in there?
I don't know. I don't have that information.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Anthony, anything to report this evening?
No report.
Okay. Commissioner Dodds?
Nothing to report.
And last but not least, Commissioner Malik?
I have a question for Sergio as well. Do you know if someone can put a, like a single wide mobile home in as an ADU? Is that an acceptable placement?
Commissioner Malik, under certain conditions, a manufactured home is allowed to serve as an accessory dwelling unit. One of the stipulations is it has to be on a permanent foundation. So nothing on wheels, no tiny houses on wheels that you just pull your vehicle up to and tow it out of the yard.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, excuse me, city planner, before we go to you, we've had a vacancy over to my left here for a while. Do you know of any plans to fill that?
Thank you for that, Chair Rosales. Actually, in the update today, under City Council, there is a workshop on the 11th.
Timing is everything.
Where the City Council will appoint a new Planning Commissioner to the vacancy.
Great, okay.
And that, that information's on the city's website, the workshop agenda and, and the backup materials are on the website.
You don't have any candidates or?
I want to say it's either seven or eight.
Very good. Okay, continue with your rest of your report.
Certainly. Well, thank you for that, Chair Rosales and members of the Planning Commission. So some upcoming Planning Commission items that the Planning Commission will ask to consider include, at their next meeting on October 23rd, a recommendation for a general plan amendment, zone amendment, tentative map, and development plan for 164-unit town home project known as Pacifica. It's at the old site of the Pacific Elementary School. That was part of the Oceanside Unified School District. It has been shuttered for a number of years. So that's coming your way at our next meeting. At the meeting of November 6th, the Planning Commission will be asked to consider a development plan and a conditional use permit for a proposed car wash at 1818 Oceanside Boulevard. It's known as Quick Quack. It's funny, funny to say that. The Planning Commission will also be asked to consider The planning commission will also be asked to consider, let me back up a little bit. On August 30th, the city council held a housing production summit, and there was five recommendations, at least, with direction from city council that staff needs to carry out. One of those include an update to our inclusionary housing ordinance. There's a proposal to increase the requirement in certain areas of town for certain types of developments from 10% to 15%. So that'll be coming, the planning commission's way in November. At that same meeting, we're also going to try to bring forward further direction from that housing production summit, a municipal code amendment to update Chapter 46, I'm sorry, Chapter 24 of the municipal code to limit short-term rentals in single-family neighborhoods east of the Five in a non-coastal zone area. On November 20th, the planning commission will be asked to consider a development plan for a city-sponsored project, it's known as the Loma Alta Creek Restoration. This is a restoration effort that's going on in between the railroad and coast highway. The city got some grant funding a few years ago. We acquired some land, and now we're at the point, we got a consolidated coastal development permit from the California Coastal Commission, and so now we're bringing forward the component that needs the planning commission's approval, and a part of the restoration is also going to be a recreational trail and observatory area, so that's coming your way at the end of November. Moving on to city council, the aforementioned workshop to appoint a new planning commission to the vacancy on the 11th. There is, on the 18th, the downtown density cap item that was considered last week by the city council has been continued to that date. There was alternate motion that strayed from staff's recommendation to propose 85 dwelling units an acre as a cap with enhanced density bonus schedules, but that motion failed, it was a 2-2 tie. And there are also, the city council will be asked to consider some historic permits on that date for two single-family homes, one at 431 South Nevada Street and one at 906 West Street. On November 1st, staff will be taking forward recommendations on storefront cannabis dispensaries. Back in April, the city council gave direction for staff to investigate and make some recommendations on how the city might be able to proceed with storefront cannabis dispensaries, so we'll be taking those recommendations forward at that time. And then finally, on December 6th, the appeal of the Alpecota Road subdivision will be considered by the city council. That concludes my update to the planning commission.
Great, good summary. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Adjourn, I know you want to adjourn, you're going to get that gavel going right there. Can you elaborate a little bit more what happened? I thought that idea you guys had to change the density for the downtown due to grease, to decrease it, was that just pressure from, say, property owners that didn't want to lose that extra amount of density that they could have had, that that's why, I think it was Eric Joyce and Ryan Kine that voted against it, and Mayor, our mayor was not there, so that's why it was a split. So can you give us a little bit more like details of what maybe they said to why they didn't support it, or why they--
Some of the reasons that the staff's recommendation wasn't supported, because one comment was, and I don't want to point anyone out, signal anyone out specifically, but we're giving too much away, and there maybe it's not quite an appetite by some council members for the type of developments that we're actually processing and reviewing currently and have recently been approved.
You're giving too much away? I thought you were taking away.
We are taking, we are taking away.
So you're taking away then?
And even with staff's proposals, some on the council thought it was too much.
Still too much?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So possibly the two that voted against it wanted even to be lesser than what you were proposing, you think?
I can't speak for those folks.
Okay, I guess I got to call them up, okay.
Call them up. And with that, we're adjourned.